Good evening and thank you for your patience. Good evening and welcome to the Canton Planning Commission for August 10th. As usual, we always like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Commissioner Zubor, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Atariah appears not to be here. Commissioner Bennett appears not to be here. Commissioner Egenberger?
I appear to be here.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek is not here. Commissioner Ocon?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins?
Here.
Commissioner Zubor is here and Chairman Green?
I am here and I do here.
Awesome.
All right. And of course, we have our planning staff, Jeff Goulet and Patrick Sloan. I have to stop for a minute because this is going to be our last Planning Commission meeting with Mr. Goulet. And it saddens me to say that because Mr. Goulet is all I've known up here in terms of the planning staff. He has been so instrumental all these years in putting together our packages and getting explanations and just doing everything possible to make us more proficient up here. And Jeff, I want to thank you personally for all your years of service doing this. You were doing it before I got here and I've been here for some time. You just keep on keeping on and I know Patrick is going to continue in that tradition, but I just want to thank you, Jeff, for all the years that you've put in. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just, you know, I appreciate, you know, almost 28 years of working with the Planning Commission and Township Board, doing master plans, doing zoning updates, you know, doing what we do here on a monthly basis. I figured, I counted it up, it's almost 500 meetings with you all over the past 28 years. Because we used to have two meetings per month. And I just appreciate the opportunity to serve the community and the capacity I have for as long as I have. It's been a good career. So I, you know, I want to thank the Planning Commission for your support and, or partnership with staff. It's been wonderful.
Any predictions as to what you're going to do with your time?
Something flexible and fun.
He's going to spend all his money in the Cayman Islands.
Well, we wish you, we wish you all the luck and success in everything that you want to do. We hope that you enjoy retirement and maybe you'll come back to visit us one of these Monday nights to see how we're doing.
I'll Zoom bomb you.
You Zoom bomb you. But I want to, I want to give a personal standing ovation to you.
Thanks, Jeff. Sit down.
No, seriously, seriously, you folks, you don't see the packages that we get. We go back, Jeff and I go back to when we used to, did not have all the technology. We had actual drawings up on the boardroom and everybody had these big, huge construction drawings in there, folding them and, you know, having to do this whole thing. Now we have it in this concise little instrument here. But those, some of those meetings went on to midnight because they were very involved and it just was necessary and is what, why Canton is what it is today. So I just want to thank, thank Jeff for that. Okay, so we have tonight a full agenda of four items, two of which are public hearings and public hearings are just that, they're where we hear what the public has to say if they want to say it. And we're going to get right into the first one right now, but before we do that, I did forget that we did have an agenda for our last meeting. So that was July 13th. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of that meeting?
Yes, so moved.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, we're going to go into our first public hearing and forgive me if-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to accept tonight's agenda.
Oh, okay, that's a good idea. All right.
Support.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel to accept and approve tonight's agenda of four items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner Zubor, for keeping me in line on that. Our first public hearing tonight, our first agenda item is a public hearing, and I hope I pronounced this correctly, the Ded Fakai Rezoning. Do I do okay with that, Patrick?
That works for me.
Where we're considering rezoning the parcel from R6 Single Family Attached Residential to R4 Single Family Attached Residential. This property is located north of Cherry Hill Road between lots and John Hicks. Patrick, could you tell us more?
Sure, thank you. The applicant proposes to rezone the three subject contiguous parcels from R6 to R4. It's a little less common to see a rezoning where it's a down zoning from a higher density to a lower density. But the purpose for that is for the applicant to propose two-unit attached single-family residential buildings. While both the R6 and the R4 districts allow for two-unit attached single-family buildings, the R4 unit allows a little bit more flexibility in terms of those units being closer. So although the R4 district is a less dense, or the R4 district is a less dense district, it does allow for the spacing to be a little bit tighter on the property. The subject parcels are currently vacant and the applicant has filed a special land use application for two-unit attached single-family residential buildings pending the outcome of the rezoning application. So although we are concurrently reviewing the special land use plans and giving feedback to the applicant, the proposed use of the property is not a condition of rezoning. So if the property is to be rezoned to R4, the applicant would be able to apply for any of the uses within that district. The last thing that I want to mention about the proposed rezoning is regarding the potential use of two-unit attached single-family buildings. In the current R6 district, that density is up to eight units per acre. And in the proposed R4 district, the allowable density for two-unit attached buildings is just over five units per acre. So there would be almost three units per acre less in terms of density. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the rezoning. There are a number of review considerations in Section 27.06, subsection D4 of the zoning ordinance for criteria to consider when looking at a rezoning. And based on our analysis, we believe that the applicant has met all of the applicable standards of that subsection. So because we believe the standards have been met, our recommendation is to approve the request to rezone the subject parcels from R6 to R4. That concludes our review and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, I appreciate that. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Ocon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do we have a representative here of the project? Welcome.
Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me through my mask. My name is Bruce Michael. I'm a partner in the project and here to represent our company as we go through the entitlement process with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let us go to the audience. Is there anyone that would care to comment or have a question on this rezoning? Yes, sir? You want to come up? I believe, well, I think we've kind of reversed things. Well, if gentleman will stay back. We have two mics. We have mics on each, either side and one side is for project sponsors and one side's for the audience, so, but it doesn't matter. Let's go. Welcome.
My name is Frank Stahuski. I own the nine and a half acres directly next to the parcel that's getting rezoned. My question is, is there any other, what do you call those? What do you call your things? Duplexes in Canton. The only one that I see is on Lots Road between, by the power lines and it's just like a, like a long, like a long house with a door on each side and it seems like it's always vacant. So I was just wondering, is there any other duplexes in Canton or is this going to be the only one?
Sure.
And what would be the size of the square footage for each individual part of the duplex? In other words, it's two families, I understand that, but what would be the size, square footage of each unit?
Patrick, we haven't actually had a submittal for specific units, have we? I mean, is this, I mean, this is, right now, what we're doing tonight is a zoning. It is not actually a site plan. So we're, the details the gentleman is asking, we really don't have that tied down yet, right?
Correct. There are a few things that I'll mention is, the first is attached two-family residential units in the R4 district is a special land use. So if that use is proposed, then the applicant would come to the Planning Commission for another public hearing on the special land use as well as an application for the site plan. The other items that I'll mention is that there are some other duplexes in the township, other developments in different areas of the township, notably here in the Cherry Hill Village, there are duplex buildings and two-family attached residential buildings. And then to answer one final item that was brought up in terms of how large, there's no determining how large developer will build a single-family unit, but the zoning ordinance does have minimum standards for floor area. So in the R4 district, which is proposed, if the applicant were to propose a two-unit attached building, the minimum floor area is 1,300 square feet with a basement and 1,500 square feet without a basement. And that's per unit.
Okay. Does that help?
Well, I have one more question.
Okay.
Per unit, per unit, I'm sorry to interrupt. Per unit, is that for each family 1,300 square feet or is that for the building with two families?
That's each dwelling.
That's each one?
Right.
Okay, but that's, to me, that's kind of small, but.
Well, those are minimums.
Those are minimums.
Those are minimums, yeah.
Okay. You're saying that you have other duplexes in Canton. I just have never seen them.
Yeah. The most recent one that this would be similar to is Livonia Builders did one on Cherry, on the, on the south side of Cherry Hill Road, just east of the Catholic Church. It was intended to be an infill policy for those narrow parcels that were difficult to develop and divide in a standard way. And the intent was is to make sure that the, how, the, the two-unit condominium is not necessarily a duplex. A duplex is a two-family dwelling that's owned by one person, basically. So this is basically a two-unit condo. So we have some of those and a condominium complex within, on the south side of Cherry Hill Road, but the, this special land use has very specific design standards and it has to be masked like a single-family house and it has to utilize side entry, you know, you know, different garage orientations so that it doesn't look like a multiple-family building. So it was a specific ordinance requirement we put in the code number of years ago to help facilitate those, those tough parcels as infill parcels. And this one, this parcel does have a lot of constraints on it relative to wetlands and things that would make it difficult to deal with under R6 with 60-foot setbacks from all the property lines. So we wanted to make sure the buildings didn't get too long, like a standard condominium complex can have buildings up to 150 foot long. These buildings can't be that big.
Okay.
So Jeff, each unit will have a separate owner?
Yes, the condominiums.
Yeah, and the regulations have not been changed since then. They still apply today, right?
Right, so they're, yeah, so this specific, this specific special land use has very specific design criteria for the R4 district, so.
Okay, sir?
Can I ask one more question and I'm done? What would the setbacks be for the duplexes compared to like where I own? How far do they have to stay away from me to build?
In the R4 district, the same setbacks would apply for the perimeter of the site for any other development in the R4 unit. So for example, in the R4, in the R4 district, the front yard setback for either a two-unit condo or detached condo is 20 feet front yard setback, 35-foot rear yard setback, and the side yard setback of at least 10 feet. And then a building separation of 10 feet.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I-
Is that okay, sir?
That's all I have.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Anyone else from the audience?
Mr. Chairman, I propose to close the public hearing.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Ocon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to go to the commission and start with Commissioner Ocon.
I am all set, thank you so much.
And Commissioner Zubor?
I have no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm all set, thank you.
Everybody's all set?
Yep.
Oh. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I am all set as well. Julia? I'm sorry, Commissioner Perkins?
I said yes.
Oh.
Sorry.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yep, I'm all set also, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I like how you keep looking at me. I move to recommend approval of the request to rezone parcels number as noted from R6 Single Family Attached Residential to R4 Single Family Residential.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and the reason that I look at you is because I'm actually hearing you from my, from this side here. This is kind of strange.
It is.
We've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Ocon. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing done. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes.
The motion carries and goes to the trustees. What's the schedule on that?
Be the 25th for first reading, I think?
Yeah, it could be as early as the 25th for first reading.
Okay, very good. All right, next agenda item, also a public hearing, the Western Township's Utilities Authority where we're considering a special land use and site plan for property which is located east of Hagerty between Palmer and Michigan Avenue. Jeff, do you want to give us a lowdown on that?
Yes, this is a request from the WTA Board for Western Township Utility Authority for an expansion of the facility on Hagerty just north of Michigan Avenue. So right now, there's a, a large facility there with underground storage tanks. They're proposing to add a 14,300 square foot storage tank, part of it's underground, part of it's above ground. So it kind of looks like our water tower up in the north part of the township. The tank will be located on the northeast corner of the property adjacent to the existing north equalization basins that were constructed with the last expansion. A storm detention system will be added and the landscaping that failed due to poor installation with the last expansion will be restored and enhanced in compliance with current requirements. The site's been designed to meet all of the special land use requirements and adds no additional traffic to the site. And the existing wooded areas are along 275 will actually screen a good portion of this, you know, from 275 there north of Hagerty Road. So Mr. Kalanowski with Wade Trim and Aaron Sprague from WTUA are here if you have any questions about the expansion plans. So we'll try to bring up the plan in a second so everybody can see it.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff. And with that, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion to open the public hearing on this project by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Ocon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, would the project sponsor like to say a few things? It's optional.
Coming up, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening. Aaron Sprague with WTUA. I'm a man of few words. This expansion is designed to meet the needs of Canton Township and Northville and Plymouth Township going into the future. It is our last planned expansion. We've proposed a partially above-ground tank primarily to save money for the users of the township. But that being said, we've certainly worked with the planning, the staff to make sure that it is an attractive building.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody from the audience care to comment or have any questions on this project?
Yeah, we did.
Mr. Chairman, I proposed, I move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Ocon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Egenberger, do you have any comments on this project?
I do not have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Perkins?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm all set, thanks.
All right, and Commissioner Zubor?
I am all set, although I'm trying to think of ways to incorporate an odor control building in my own projects.
Oh, I don't think that's before us tonight.
Oh, darn.
Commissioner Ocon?
I'm all set, thank you.
And I am all set as well. Do I hear a motion on this project?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the request for a special land use for essential service and site expansion of the WTUA facility on parcel 099-990001705. As the proposal meets all the criteria for special land use and site plan approval.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zubor, I believe, was it that? Yes.
Yes.
You did, okay. Again, I was kind of hard to-
I sound just like Alan.
Oh.
Your voice is deeper.
Any, any further discussion on the motion?
I was going to ask.
Commissioner Zubor, will you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes. And Chairman Green?
And that's a yes from me. And where does this proceed?
And this will go to the Township Board on the 25th for approval of the special land use and site plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Our third agenda item, which had been tabled, is the Meadows of Canton Minor PDD where we're considering a minor planned development district for property which is located west of Ridge Road between Cherry Hill and Salts Road. I believe we need a motion to take that off the table.
I will move to take that off the table.
Support.
Okay, you got a motion to untable this project by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Ocon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, Patrick, could you give us more details on this?
Sure. We have our staff analysis that describes the project in a similar detail as the last time, so this time, I'm just going to highlight some of the changes and the major highlights of the project. At the meeting of June 15th of 2020, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this PD application and discussed the PD plans and alternatives and tabled action on the application to allow the applicant to formally submit revised plans based on alternatives discussed and presented by the applicant during the meeting. The applicant has submitted revised PD plans that include the following notable changes: removal of the two lots closest to Ridge Road, an increase in the frontage landscape area along Ridge Road as a result, removal of the walkway from the pond to Ridge Road, and the addition of one lot to the southwest portion of the site based on the reorientation of the stormwater pond. Therefore, the net change in lots has been a reduction from 39 down to 38. So in the current proposal, there are 38 single-family residential site condominiums proposed and the location is the west side of Ridge between Salts Road and the ITC corridor. With the reduction in one unit, the project density will be reduced down to 2.41 units per acre, which is less than the maximum density of four units per acre permitted in the village edge area of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District. The site is located in the village edge area of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay and the underlying zoning is R1. However, rather than apply the standards of the R1 district, Section 6.09, Subsection B2 of the zoning ordinance states that the Cherry Hill Village Design Guidelines are the applicable development standards and are made part of the zoning ordinance. And although the original agreement for Cherry Hill Village expired in 2014, the site remains subject to the standards of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District in Section 6.09 of the zoning ordinance. There are a couple of items, changes and highlights that we would like to go through before concluding with our recommendation. Near the bottom of page two of our analysis, under Schedule Regulations and Modifications, we have some additional details regarding the lot sizes of the project in relation to some of the lot sizes and other developments in the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District. All of the lots are at least 7,500 square feet. And in terms of the lot sizes, the Cherry Hill Village Design Guidelines in the zoning ordinance call for the lots and the shapes to be anywhere from 50 to 90 feet wide and 85 to 100 feet long, or 85 to 150 feet long. The proposed lot widths are at least 60 feet in this development and the proposed lot depths are at least 130 feet. Although the design guidelines call for wider lots primarily located on sites farthest from the village core, the proposed Meadows of Cherry Hill site is located about 300 feet from the village core boundary. And we've looked through some other developments in the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District that are either similarly situated or in some cases even farther out from the core. The following are some of the developments that have been approved in the village edge area. So again, some of the developments that I'll name here, they're in the edge area, they're not in the core. One of them is the Landings. Those lots are 50 by 110 feet. Another is Concord Park and those lots are 60 feet by 110. The corners of Cherry Hill has lots that are 60 feet by 120 feet. The ridge has lots that are 55 feet by 110 feet. And there are also several areas of the Cherry Hill Village Plan Development that are located near the outer areas of the village edge that are between 40 and 55 feet wide and 110 to 120 feet deep. So the lot sizes in the proposed Meadows of Cherry Hill is consistent with many of the similar lot sizes located in developments located in the edge area of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District. The last two items that I want to note are the front yard setbacks and side yard setbacks. The Cherry Hill Village Design Guidelines call for front yard setbacks to be between 10 and 20 feet wide. The proposed front yard setbacks are 20 feet except for six lots that have 15-foot front yard setbacks. So those front yard setbacks are on the high end. And then finally, with the side yard setbacks, the zoning ordinance calls for the side yard setbacks to vary from between 0 to 10 feet and the proposed side yard setbacks are 5 feet. So these are in the middle in terms of what the zoning ordinance calls for, for the side yard setbacks. So with that additional information as well as the proposed changes on the PD plan, our recommendation is approval of the minor planned development district, subject to any modifications to the plan required by the Planning Commission relative to consistency with the design. And in addition to that, there are some updated facade designs where the corner units have been upgraded with planter boxes, additional porch details to dress up those units on the corner. And those are also included in the packet. So that concludes our report and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. We're just going to go right to the commission and start down Commissioner Ocon. We discussed a lot of details before. Did, was there anything that you want to add to the?
No, I appreciate the changes and what we see here and I am okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Zubor?
I have, I have no questions.
Okay, and Commissioner Engel?
Plan looks fine to me, thanks.
Commissioner Perkins?
I appreciate everything you've done.
That's it? Oh, Commissioner Egenberger?
Being nice.
Yes.
Yes, I can see they've worked on it and-
Yes, I can see they've worked on it, and thank you, I'm good.
We appreciate that. I have one question, and it, this more or less has, it's just, we beat up that little strip of land the last time because the homeowners there do not want that to be a walk-through, they want a path, right? But because of our ordinance, they're going to have to put a little piece of sidewalk in there. And I'm looking at that, and I'm thinking, that means they're going to have to come, the homeowners association is responsible for clearing off the sidewalk. Is there any way we can curtail that little piece of sidewalk?
You're correct. Based on the letter of the ordinance, the sidewalk would be required along that front edge, and they do show it on the PD plans just for the sake of illustrating compliance.
Right.
But they, they could either put it in, or they could defer it until such time as there is a sidewalk put in the area, at which time the association would, would contribute their part to making that connection.
Could it be held in like escrow type of thing, in case maybe the sidewalk gap committee decides to put a sidewalk through there? At least that part would be covered. Okay, I just, I looked at that, I'm thinking, you know, that's kind of ridiculous. I agree with the ordinance in general, but not for something, you know, like that, that may, it may stay that way for generations, who knows? So that's all I have. I appreciate the, the efforts that they made along Ridge Road with those, those first two, two lots. I think that's going to look good, be better for the area. It will not be so appearance-wise different from what's already there, what's already been established. I think it's going to be a good, a good fit, myself.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the Meadows of Cherry Hill Minor Planned Development District, formerly named the Meadows of Canton, on the tax parcels numbers 072-99-0005-704 and 072-99-0009-002, as provided in the planned development agreement and plan documents.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Ocon. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioner Zuber, please call the vote.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
That's a yes for me. So this, again, will go to the trustees, as we are recommending body to the trustees. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, our next agenda item is a site plan approval. We're trying to consider final site plan approval for Arbor Glen, which is, this property's located north of Warren Road and west of Ridge Road. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure, just wait for this to load here. There we go. The applicant proposes to locate 36 single-family residential site condominiums, single-family homes, on approximately 36 acres located at the northwest corner of Warren Road and Ridge Road. There is one entrance proposed on Ridge Road on the south part of the site, which is located about 400 feet north of Warren Road. There's also one emergency vehicle entrance proposed on Ridge Road on the north part of the site, which is about 1,675 feet north of Warren Road. The project sponsor proposes to pave Ridge Road from Warren Road north to approximately 100 feet north of the southern entrance to the development, so approximately 500 feet of paving are proposed. The approval of the final planned development, as well as the preliminary site plan, was granted by the Township Board of Trustees on November 12th of 2019, and prior to that, it was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Since the final planned development and the preliminary site plan were approved, the plan is the same as the preliminary approval, with the exception of two changes. The first change is that the applicant will be paving an additional 100 feet along Warren Road. So as you see on the plan, and I'll zoom in, where the paving is, or I'm sorry, on Ridge Road, where the paving is north of the entrance, on the preliminary site plan, the paving went to the entrance on Ridge Road. On the final site plan, the paving is going an additional 100 feet north on the site plan. And that may be because of a county requirement from the Wayne County Permit Office. The applicant has gone through the county permitting office, so there are some requirements that come up along the way. So an additional 100 feet of paving on Ridge Road, that's the first change. The second change is that on the preliminary site plan, there were crosswalks shown both across Ridge Road west to east and across Warren Road from north to south. And during the process of reviewing the preliminary site plan, the applicant had showed it on the plans, but had some doubts of whether the county would approve it because Warren Road going from west to east is not stop-controlled, and that the, the county permitting office will not permit the crosswalk across an intersection unless there is a signal there or some kind of a stop control. So therefore, the county would not permit the crosswalk going north to south across Warren Road. However, the county did approve the crosswalk going across Ridge Road from west to east. So that crosswalk is illustrated going across Ridge Road, and it connects to the connecting sidewalk on the east side of Ridge Road north of Warren. So that connection will be made as part of this project. So those are the only two major changes that have taken place. Some of the landscaping has been fine-tuned to comply with the ordinance, and the lot configuration and the shapes remain the same. So because of that, our recommendation is approval of the final site plan, subject to obtaining all outside agency permits and submitting the financial securities to the township prior to review by the Board of Trustees. That concludes our report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. While we're, we were on the subject of sidewalks, though, because of the way that the preliminaries where this site plan is drawn, I don't see an indication. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking there, we have the same kind of situation up at the northern part of the property as we had in the last project, where by code, there would be a sidewalk there in that emergency access, that I think is just kind of, I don't know, just kind of hanging out there. I don't know what distance that is, maybe 10 feet. It's something that we might want to look to waive that as well?
That's correct. What's shown here in orange is the proposed sidewalk, and there are a couple of reasons why there are no additional sidewalks on either Ridge Road or Warren Road. So first, we'll go through Ridge Road.
Okay.
Ridge Road is a natural beauty road, and we have very much limited any kind of clearing and grading that will take place in Ridge Road, and as part of their definite benefit, there are going to be additional planting within the Ridge Road area south of the access drive. So we're very sensitive in terms of what else we put in the Ridge Road right away. To go north of the entrance drive off of Ridge Road with any kind of sidewalk, including up to, or just including the, the emergency entrance, would probably require some significant grading and significant tree removal for something that may never be built to adjacent properties. There's no connecting sidewalks north or south along Ridge Road, so any kind of future connection, the chances of that would be very low.
Okay.
And then also, along west on Warren Road, it's a similar situation where there are no sidewalk connections farther west on Warren Road, and also, as you can see on the plan here, to install any kind of sidewalk along Warren Road west of Ridge, it would require not just the grading, but some wetland filling too and disturbing that area, just to connect to an area that doesn't have any kind of connecting sidewalk to it, so it would just be a dead end. So those were some things that were carefully considered of how the site relates to the area and trying to preserve some of that rural character.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to just open this up freelance to the commission. Any questions, comments, concerns on this project?
I'm fine with it, Jeff. I mean, it's great.
Everybody good?
Looks good to me.
Okay.
I'm good.
Well, then I expect to hear a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the final site plan for Arbor Glen on the tax parcels as noted, which includes 36 single-family residential site condominiums on approximately 36.02 acres, subject to obtaining all outside agency permits and submitting the financial securities to the township prior to review by the Board of Trustees.
Support.
Support.
There we go, all right. All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
That's a yes. And then this goes to the trustees next month, or this month, or when?
Whenever they post the financial securities.
Okay, all right, sounds good. All right, we have some new business to send to staff. The Singh Development, Safe Store Self-Storage, Chick-fil-A, and we, we need to hear a cheer or something. Oh, no, no cheers for Chick-fil-A? Havens Orthodontics? Do I hear a motion to send that to staff?
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion and support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We also have a public hearing coming up for September 14th. Safe Store Self-Storage, Havens Orthodontics, and Home Depot Outlot. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
Support.
All right, we've got a motion and support for the public hearing for September 14th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
And Mr. Chairman, I just have one more item. We have a new planner that just started last week here at Protonic, is at the end. He's already planner one, replaces the position that was vacated by Lee Thurston at the end of the year. So he just started last week, so he's in the process, he's, he was, got the, the job of taking everybody's temperature to the.
Yeah, planner slash temperature taker.
All right.
He did a fabulous job.
It's a new world.
You did, you did a good job, Eric.
We do everything, so, yeah, welcome.
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 Yes, welcome, thank you, all right. Any final words, Jeff?
I think we're done. This is the easiest meeting I've had in a long time.
We're going to miss you, Jeff.
Well, we are. We're going to miss you.
Thank you very much, so, thanks.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
So moved. Motion to adjourn.
If you make it.
Support.
All right, we've got motion and support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you so much.